My pleasure to be here today. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I see we have a large crowd here tonight. Last meeting was the call for public comment on the marijuana laws. I do have a public comment section of every meeting. When I open that, I'd like if you have comments on the marijuana issue for over four, to please limit them to three minutes. We want to move through that because like I said, we called for the discussion about it at the last meeting. So that being said, I will open it to public comment. Anybody?
Yes, and my comment is a further discussion about medical marijuana.
Oh yeah, you need to identify yourself, please. I'm sorry.
My name is Jan Wright. I live in Lakeview. I think the bigger conversation here really is the stranglehold that Big Pharma and the AMA have on our country. And I resent their monopoly on our health care. I don't want manufactured drugs. They're dangerous. I've been fortunate enough in my life to be low income and without health insurance till I turned 65. And then I smashed my wrist and it was good timing because fortunately it needed surgery and blah, blah, blah. But my first go-to for healing for my family, my four children, myself, my husband, has been herbs. And my yard is a, my pharmacopeia, which, and I have plants in my yard that are no different from any other yards in town. But through the years of gaining that knowledge and experience, for me, that is not how it goes for me. I don't care what, if other people want to use another type of medicine, that's, you know, that's fine, that's their business. But I resent that one little plant is being so malarly. You know, I just don't get it. It drives me crazy. Anyway, that's my comment.
Anybody else?
My name is Nelson Jurick. On the medical marijuana issue, she may have a legitimate deal. I oppose it because once you legalize that, what's next? As a former addict, I can only picture what's going to happen next.
Thank you.
Betty, your turn.
Nelson Jurick.
Anybody else?
Mike, I see that I'm down here on the agenda for correspondence that I sent out. And I didn't realize I was going to be on the agenda. I do have some additional comments. Would you like a public comment or when I?
Well, actually, the part of the agenda you're on, it just lists you as a letter received in our informational package, just so the council is aware that there is a letter there as they've had a chance to read it, and you're not actually going to participate in it.
Okay, so I can give my public comment now?
If you, if you get it in three minutes.
I'll do my best. My name's Teresa Decker. I live here in town. I was raised here and I'm a pharmacist here, so I'm familiar with medications, marijuana. You were tasked today with making decisions, I'm going to read the letter that I wrote because then I don't follow through my words as much. You're tasked today with making decisions regarding marijuana dispensaries coming to Lakeview. There are three options: impose a moratorium, ban dispensaries, or allow them with regulation. Last week, on the advice of the county's attorney, our county commissioners joined many other counties and cities and voted unanimously to implement a moratorium on marijuana dispensaries in Lake County. A moratorium will allow local governments time to formulate regulations regarding manner, place, and time of dispensary operations. The entire town is interested in listening to your plans today regarding manner, place, and time for marijuana selling operations. If regulations have not been written, clearly a moratorium would be wise to allow time to put these in place. Do you have the knowledge, manpower, and funds to write regulations so that a marijuana business can start on May 1st? Let's discuss manner, place, and time, starting with place. Where would dispensaries be allowed? The House Bill 3460 specifies that dispensaries can only operate in areas that are zoned: agricultural, industrial, or I think it's mixed-use or commercial? Yeah, I wasn't quite sure.
It's commercial and mixed-use.
Okay. We know they cannot be near a school. What about parks, churches, the town pool, baseball fields, fairgrounds, and other places attended by children? How many establishments will be allowed within the city limits? How will the neighborhoods be kept state with a business that is a magnet for criminals? Next, with manner, place, and time, would be time. Will the town dictate when marijuana can be sold? Can it be sold after 10:00 PM or after the bars close at 2:00 AM in the morning? Finally, let's address the vague term manner. Mr. Warren has been trying very hard to get details on what manner means so that you have the information needed to put regulations in place. Without this information, it is impossible to do a good or thorough job of regulating manner, place, and time. I have a few questions that might pertain to manner. How, how do your regulations address the required child-resistant packaging? What about daily limits on purchases or weekly limits on purchases? Is it permissible to sell 15 pounds to one person daily? Will pot plants be sold or will marijuana seeds and dried products be on store shelves? Can food and drinks with marijuana be sold? What are your age requirements to purchase pot? Will the cus, if the customer is visibly impaired or high, would you still allow the product to be sold? Will you allow cultivation or growing on the business property? Have land use issues been addressed? Are sufficient guidelines so that a business won't be charged with manufacturing a controlled substance in place? Will plants be grown indoors to protect neighbors from the odors? Can plants be grown outdoors and visible from the street? How big can they be? Jacksonville has discussed an 82-square-foot limit and ceilings limited to 10 feet. How many mature plants and seedlings can be grown at one time? Will there be limits on the inventory? How many pounds are permissible on the property? Would a semi-truck, flatbed with bales of pot similar to big bales of hay be allowed? What about fire protection? Will firewalls be required? And limits set on lighting strength? Testing for pesticides and mold is required. How will this be done and can it be done in-house? Will city officials be allowed to inspect the premises at all times?
Teresa, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we did want to leave at least three minutes tonight, and I believe all of the council has a copy of your letter.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Can I have 10 more seconds to read my last paragraph?
Yes, you may.
I'll try to keep it short. Local governments have the ability to impose this moratorium by May 1st. I urge, I'll just summarize it. I just urge you to represent your constituents here, look at how people have voted in town, and vote the way that your supporters want you to vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Debbie Utley, and I'm the Lake County Drug and Alcohol Substance Abuse Prevention Coordinator for the county. And I'm going to leave with two folks. Two articles, there's a grand new article out, that even occasional marijuana use causes brain abnormalities, especially in young people. And I think all of you have known me long enough in my current job as the prevention coordinator. The biggest objective that I have is to keep our youth safe. And I was pleased to see people from the recovery community here talking to you about drug and alcohol abuse and use. And quite honestly, when you're seeing scientists that are from Northwestern University, Harvard Medical School, and Mass General saying these things, I hope that you guys will look at the science, unlike our president, who has signed all the science proof that he needs that's been around, that's certified data that's been proven by scientists, and he comes out and makes a personal comment, which is the exact same words that the pro-marijuana advocates use. I would like to see a responsible head of our country who uses our scientific data that's available that I teach the kids to use, not to just Google marijuana because all the pro-advocates who outspend prevention people like me about 17 million to one. So I left you the article. I also left you the medical marijuana counts again as of April 1st. They come out every quarter. And I would just say to you, just like in 2008, when the law was passed, that medical marijuana exists, there are current capabilities for people to get marijuana. They do not need a retail store with either flashing neon signs that have medical marijuana plants on them because our kids, that's how they get them. If you go to the, every couple of years as a Monitor of the Future, it's a national study, 50% of the kids in this country who get their marijuana get it from medical marijuana card users. So yes, I always get to love the people in Lake County that I adore, that say to me, well, I, whether it's alcohol or whatever they're talking about, yes, we do such a splendid job in the world controlling alcohol, and that's where all the kids get their drinking when they're underage students. In our county, they don't go with fake IDs. They get it at somebody's home. Same thing they do with prescription drugs, I understand that. That's why I teach people how to take inventory of both of those products if they don't want to lock them up. But let's not add a third thing and make it retail space with the school kids who go and buy and see in the size. They already think it's totally healthy because it's natural. And I would just say I'd like to keep our kids safe and not have our numbers going back up. We've just been working hard to bring them down, and they're coming down in Lakeview. So I left both of those articles for you that show the current count as of April 1st and also the newest one regarding casual use as harmful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
May I speak?
Yes, you may.
My name is Bill Berry. I was a veterinarian here for 36 years. I have a narcotics license, and I just let that lapse four or five years ago. The thing that I want to bring out with this whole discussion is control of the substance. When I bought a restricted drug, I had to keep it in a locked box. When I utilized that drug, I had to make a note of where it was used and which animal it was used on, any side effects that were unexpected. All of that was kept in a locked box. I was the only one in the office that had a key. They talk about dispensaries. And a dispensary just means you go there and get it. There is very little control as far as, let's say there's a toxic substance that might appear on that plant. There are no laboratories licensed to do what needs to be done, and that is measure the efficacy of the drug. And it is a drug, and there's nothing sadder than finding a mind-altering drug that becomes chemically dependent. All of our youth thinks by the time they're 18 that they're indestructible. We know that's not the case, but they are influenced by their surroundings. And for you to make a decision, you need to know that the decision you make is affecting not only the town of Lakeview, but also all of the people in the county and the agencies of the county that are tasked with trying to control some of these, some of these drugs. So I just wanted to tell you that you need to make the decision with the community in mind.
Thank you.
I would like to add, and I haven't heard it from these ladies back here, no matter what Oregon says about it being okay to have dispensaries, it's still illegal by federal State law doesn't trump it, just to-
Thank you.
-add a little bit more to it.
Can I just add one thing? Dr. Sanjay Gupta, who I mentioned at the last meeting, has a wonderful documentary available on YouTube. And I would suggest that anyone who's talking about it, view that first because it contradicts a lot of what I'm hearing here.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other comments? If not, I'm going to close the public session. Or not hearing public comment. Okay? We will move into communication, comments, and informational items. Council, you all have a packet with a letter of support for Red Rock Fuel, Red Rock Biofuel, correspondence to Lake County Fair, correspondence from Mrs. Teresa Decker, correspondence from Reva Slingel, Bert Slingel. And I also had you another letter that I received today from Abby Finetti. Okay?
Is this appropriate?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, it's a completely different topic and I'm not on the agenda.
No, if it's public comment, I do apologize.
I am certainly delighted that I was able to attend this informative session. Anyway, Western Fireworks Display, Warren Watts called in a panic this evening. Apparently Ray's aware of it, that he wanted me to make the town council aware that there's a deadline regarding the fireworks implementation May 9th. We have to have a plan in place or we lose our place with Western Fireworks. So I know because I came and made the original presentation about the chamber, I didn't want to drop the ball in case nobody was aware that the timeline is tighter than, than we thought. So Money Wise, he indicated that U.S. Bank was a potential contributor, but I don't, I don't know how firm he is on that. The county continues to express interest in contributing, but it honestly sounds like it falls on the town or the fairgrounds to pull this off. And I don't know what plans are in place to make something happen prior to May 9th, if any.
Brent, you have a comment?
I do, like, just briefly, and that is, last week I did talk with Kim Kestner about getting together with Don Moore and, you know, figure out how we're going to do this. I guess I wasn't aware of the May 9th deadline, so I believe that-
Well, and Warren's hard to-
Kim's out of town this week, and he said that he would get something together for the part of the week.
Okay, so at least we're all on the same, because I thought, well, it's probably working, but nobody realizes that this Western Fireworks Display deadline that then actually bumps us out of our, our place for securing the, the show that we've had in the past. Warren has a backup shoot team prepared to take his place, but all those things have to be confirmed apparently by this deadline.
Was there a figure given, or is it just-
Well, it always runs about $3,000 is what we're looking at. So there was, historically, there's been a $500 contribution from the county, a $500 contribution from the town, various fundraisers, and then the chamber absorbed the rest of it. So I, you know, I, I speak without any real authority at this point. I know the chamber will participate to whatever dollar amount, you know, is requested. I think they want to, they want to play a part. They just can't carry that, that whole load. And it sounds like from Warren's perspective that the fire department is ready to gear up and do some, some aggressive fundraisers, but I think all that has to hap, you know, it sounds like Ray's on it with the county. I just didn't want it to pass and, and nobody had pointed out that, oh, by the way, that was the deadline.
Well, I attended the Christmas Valley County Commissioners Meeting last month, and they talked with, I guess they've donated to Christmas Valley the same funds that they've donated here, the $500 you're speaking of.
Who has?
The county.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
Did you say $500?
Yeah.
They told them that they would do $500 there again this year, and so I don't know about here, they didn't mention.
Okay. And the reception at the county level was also, oh gosh, we don't want it to disappear, but no, nobody really stepping forward to say, I'm going to own this baby. So either the fairgrounds got to step up and own it and, and be in control, or somebody at the town level needs to, because we'll spend a lot of time going back and forth, well, I thought you were going to do it, I thought you were going to do it. The only thing I'm clear on is the chamber's not doing it. So that's all I wanted to share.
Thanks for keeping us informed. It sounds like Ray is on top of it with Commissioner Kestner, so we'll follow through on that.
All right. So as long as you're aware of the May 9th, and Ken's aware of it, I feel like I've done my job. All right. Thank you, guys.
Quit calling, sir.
I forgot something. I've been so long since I've been to a town council meeting. I was in regards to loose running dogs. We had a couple of dogs in our neighborhood last week that attempted to kill one cat at about 1:00 in the morning. I happened to be outside, I broke that up, and one of the dogs came at me, and alls I had in my hand was a flashlight. I was praying that I didn't have to thump on that dog because it lunged viciously at me. Then a few nights later, one of my other neighbors lost their cat due to running loose dogs. When I had my dog and he got loose, I felt fortunate, I get to take him.
Okay, we have an animal ordinance. You need to make a written complaint to Town Hall here to have an ordinance to cover that. Hopefully that'll solve your problem. Okay? What area happened?
It's on North J Street between Second and Third.
I just wanted to know what area.
Well, I talked to two different police officers. They said, mace the dog, and if it comes at you, you have the right to defend yourself. I really have issues about beating the tar out of somebody's animal.
I don't think that would be a good idea, but what you do, you need to follow through with it.
I think the people that own the dogs should be arrested and locked up for a little while, put the blame where it actually belongs.
We have an ordinance against it. Stop in Town Hall and file your complaint.
Okay, well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. I've got a baseball game to go to.
Yes, we're still in public comment. I moved too quickly on that. Frank, you had a public comment?
I'd like to follow up on him. Last Friday night, a dog jumped over a four-foot fence into my neighbor's yard and killed our favorite cat. And so I hadn't, I wasn't going to comment on that until he did, and it reminded me that we lost our, one of our favorite cats last Friday night from somebody's dogs. And my wife heard them, but the time I could get out after dark and get a light on, it jumped the fence and gone. But last Sunday morning, the fire crew showed up in our area and took burn one house in from the corner, and I'm glad they decided to burn the one on the south side instead of the north side of the street. Want to thank Dennis and the, I think there were six different crews that run through a training program up there. I thought that they were all professional-like and they did an excellent job. And the owner of the property has jumped right in there and he's got about everything all moved away, all in two loads of field dirt. Doesn't have it landscaped yet, looked like he might need a little more, but I'm quite pleased that they jumped in and got that cleaned up in our front door.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. I know that was a concern of yours at one of our other meetings, so I'm glad that worked out well.
I'm really pleased the way it happened.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now I'm going to close public comment. We've already went to communication, comments, and informational items, so we'll go ahead and move into the consent calendar.
I would move that we vote on the consent calendar and the regular council minutes for 3/11/14.
One second, Ted.
Is it?
I thought it was for April 8.
Well, it says March right here. So I mean, that's what I read. I'm sorry. April 8. Blaymire, Blaymire.
I missed one.
The minutes of April 8, 2013.
Is there a second? I have motion to second to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Mayor, I didn't, I didn't vote. I did not read the April 2nd ones. I went back and reviewed the March ones. I'm sorry. So I'm staying for voting on that just then.
We'll move into mayor council manager updates. Kind of go through this quickly. I attended a ATV meeting with Ho Doc OSP, county commissioners, Mr. Thornton and Mr. Cuff, and the sheriff and the town. Mr. Warren was there, and Mr. Simpson's there also. It was a very productive meeting. I attended the PAC meeting, that's the President Advisory Committee at Warner Creek. I toured the pool remodel project with Vane. It's looking nice, it looks like they're right on track with that. And then kind of to go along with what Frank was talking about, I wanted to let Fire Chief Dennis know that I've received several comments of a job well done to, to him and his crews and all the volunteers. It was very professionally handled, well done, and it's nice to receive compliments on their work. So that's all I have. Sandy?
I have none.
My turn. I went to the Ag Advisory Committee meeting last night of our last meeting. And one of the things that they're discussing is some of the leased lands that they have. And they are going to have one of the pieces of property that they have lay fallow for the year. It's been overgrazed by the people who lease it, do not follow the lease agreement, so we have to keep that open for a year to, to re-vegetate. Other than that, things seem to be going pretty well. The Ag Department, the FHA is all doing well, and they're looking forward to the FFA with the, not the, the 4H group with their, their animals.
Okay. Mike?
The SCOED South Central Oregon Economic Development District did have interviews with three applicants that I sent on. It's been a couple of weeks ago, I think. I got a letter, I think, into the office, or into the Town Hall today, from one of those, Fred Smith. And he thanked us for opening up. And they likened him on what a small community really is looking for in development. And so, you know, I'm not sure Ray or anyone can tell, tell us if they reached a decision on who they hired or who they were going to hire, if they hired any of those three or are looking at others. But there were three good applicants, and I, you know, I really felt good after seeing we had that kind of people wanting to pursue economic development in our county in that regard. So it was a good, good meeting. And then also, the Red Rock Biofuel letter of support, Ray, has passed here. It's something that we've been working on in negotiations and working with Red Rock Biofuels, and it looks like maybe some things are on the horizon that might be good, good and maybe right until it's been a little more on that. He's a, he's been involved in that much as I have, or more so even. And so the other thing is, I did attend the President Advisory Committee meeting yesterday. And also yesterday, the attendance of the ATV, as Mayor had mentioned, very interesting, and perhaps that can turn into something. We've been looking at the ATV ordinance for some time. It looks like some headway might be gained after the meeting yesterday with all those involved, the Oregon State Police representative and the Oregon Department of Transportation and the town of Lakeview, and then the county all working together perhaps to make it work once again for economic development and to benefit us in tourism. The PAC meeting that I attended after that to 12:00 noon included a bunch of information on the, the things that they're doing out of the PAC. Their food drive was very successful and are out of the prison in Warner Creek. And also, they have a home for good, which they were asking for a local representative to root those who are relocating after they are released from the prison. And so they've got some good works in that, and it sounds like a good program. But that's pretty much all I have on.
Okay, thank you. Brent?
We had an air quality committee meeting today with an advance group one more time. Air DEQ would like to, and would tend to at least have scheduled for your May 13th council meeting, your next regular council meeting, oral work session at 3:00, to meet with DEQ to go over the draft plans that exist now and discuss some other issues around the air quality with DEQ. So work session on the 13th. Going to keep you guys busy for the next few weeks. We do have budget scheduled for next Tuesday, the 29th. We have a first budget committee meeting of the year. That'll be at 4:00, and we'll be here. Last year, we remember we didn't be at, I don't remember any other meeting, but it's busy for the next Tuesday, so we'll be here. Hopefully we'll get it done in two meetings to get it in. I'd like to do it in one, but I don't know if that's possible. With regards to economic development, that Mike alluded to the interviews that they did, I'm aware only that they offered the position to one of the three, but I am not, I don't know if that offer was accepted. So I have beds on vacation this week. And finally, with your- And finally, with regards to Red Rock, there really hasn't been much new information, we have had several meetings and there is confidentiality involved in negotiating terms of community service fee under the enterprise zone. I am also aware, and I just learned this today, that Red Rock has or is retaining consultants to work through the land use processes, there's several things that are, that have to be done there, there needs to be an amendment or an expansion of the urban growth boundary to include the location that they want to build in, zoning needs to be established for that property, and then there's an annexation issue then into the Town of Lakeview. All that kind of is, are kind of intertwined with each other. In addition to that, they also need to amend the enterprise zone to be included, their location, their design to locate and be included within the enterprise zones so they'll be eligible for the property tax benefits that their project needs. So, and that's what Mike and I and others have been negotiating with Red Rock. That kind of catches up with all of those things.
Okay. Thank you. Kristy? Okay. We'll go ahead and move into old business. The first item is a continued discussion regarding medical marijuana dispensaries, and in order to do that, I'd like to make a motion to bring the table motion back to the table.
One second, Ted.
Have a motion to second to do so, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both? That being said, Mr. Bogardis, as part of this discussion, you have a letter that you'd like to discuss with us?
When you made your decision to table the medical marijuana dispensary thing, as I, as I looked at that, in effect, you agreed to take no action with respect to medical marijuana dispensers. And the first thing everybody needs to understand, by virtue of the record, Senate Bill, medical marijuana dispensers under Oregon law are legal, whether you like that or not, there isn't much you can do about it. What we can do about it, when I say we, the Town of Lakeview, is to impose reasonable and in time manner and place regulations regarding the site and operation of dispensers. The Senate Bill did allow local jurisdictions to impose reasonable time, manner, and place regulations. The action that the council took at its April eight meeting by taking no action, if you were to fail to act by May first, then you would lose that right. You'd lose that right to impose reasonable regulations. If you carry your action further, let's assume sometime after May first, somebody did apply for and receive authorization from the Oregon Health Authority to locate and operate the dispensary in Lakeview, and then you attempted to go back and impose some type of regulatory ordinance on the operation of the dispenser, you're probably, you're going to, that ordinance would not be effective because ordinances, regulatory ordinances don't have retroactive effect, so you've lost the ability to regulate dispensers. Quite frankly, and I don't mean to chastise you, had I been here at that meeting, I was in the air back east, or I would have been, had I been here, I would have counseled you not to take that action. So, when I learned that you did, conversation with Ray, I think it's very, very important that we revisit it, I think in Herald and News Today, one hundred and nineteen jurisdictions in the state of Oregon to date have imposed moratoriums. I think it's vital that we do impose a moratorium, recognizing that dispensers unless the legislature changes something, they're here to stay, but by this temporary, this temporary moratorium, we can take the time, we, the council, can take the time to impose reasonable and legal restrictions on the operation and location of these dispensers. I think it's vitally important that we impose a moratorium to take the time as a, as a council and community input of reasonable regulations. So, that's my pitch, that's my pitch, and I think it's good solid legal advice, I'd like the, like the council to, the ordinance is there, I prepared the ordinance, I'd like the council to enact that ordinance and get it off to Oregon Health Authorities who are on the west, and then take the time, let's see what other jurisdictions are doing, what's reasonable, what's not reasonable. And I think a perfect example is, these things are, you can locate this under the general Senate Bill wording, they're locatable in a commercial zone, and this because of place restriction, I wouldn't want to see, again, I'm not a big fan of their medical marijuana dispensaries, but I'm a lawyer enough to know that they're going to be legal, they are legal. I wouldn't want to see the location of one of the downtown core area, it's a commercial zone. It's not an unreasonable place restriction to say, we want it located out on Fourth Street, or we want it located here, we don't want it in our downtown core area, this is just an example of reasonable restrictions that can be imposed, okay? So we need to take the time to develop those restrictions, and this ordinance, this moratorium ordinance would give us time to do that, so that's my pitch, and thank you for listening.
Do we do that to other businesses, John?
Okay. Do what?
Do we do that same action to other businesses? Put them in a location that they have to be, other than planning and zoning.
There is some, there is some restriction, but it's not.
Not near like what he's talking about, to the.
Any other comments from the council?
I have several comments, but I'll wait.
Okay, yeah. After reviewing what happened at the last meeting, I have to say that I got involved a little bit in the motionalism, especially secondary to the Oregon cities and my feelings toward that organization. I have since talked with more people in the medical community that I am involved with. I have had nothing to do with medical marijuana in my nursing career, but in speaking with other people, and after the meeting, talking about a total ban on medical marijuana in the Town of Lakeview. And I came up, or I thought of that as being the perfect solution, and now I'm thinking more and more that we need to go into this moratorium aspect so that we can have time to think about this and plan about it rather than having our hands tied. But I did enjoy the meetings, but it did turn me a little bit because of this League of Oregon cities things. At this time, I truly voiced that I would like to go to the moratorium secondary, but I am totally against medical marijuana dispensers.
Okay. Sandy?
Well, I mentioned that I was kind of undecided about things, but I think that at the present time, because of the timelines, we do need to, if we're going to have an ordinance, we need to do an ordinance, and we will not be able to do that on the first. And the other thing is that there are still some problems with the whole thing and including the inspection of marijuana for dispensaries that have not been settled yet, and who's going to do that, and they need to be licensed or not licensed, they are not licensed now. And, you know, small, not small things, but things in that realm that are not answered yet by anyone, so I.
Michael, Mike, I know you're passionate about this and have more comments, but I want to go ahead with mine. Last time I voted for the moratorium or against tabling it, I should say, I still feel the same way. I believe in order for this council to make a logical, intelligent decision about time, place, and manner, or what we're going to do, or what action we're going to take, I believe we need this moratorium in order to get that. And I know one of the concerns voiced to me was that we'll pass this moratorium and then just sit on it and do nothing for the next year, and that's not the intent of this at all. Intent is to buy us some time with this moratorium so that we can act on it and do things in a, in a manner that's beneficial to our community. So, I am still in favor of it, so, Mike, I yield to you.
Well, I will keep it short because I can pretty much tell where we're heading and knew that it would head this way. So, you know, that's, I will pin for those who are on medical prescriptions for marijuana, they've been forced now by the county to head to Paisley, which I'm probably not going to be there, I doubt anybody will choose there, I don't even know if they address the issue as an incorporated community, but now we as counselors, if vote today, puts a moratorium on it for the next year, those in our community, whether it be one hundred five or one, is going to be driven out of town to purchase their medical prescriptions, which are legal by state statute, and that's what we're supposed to follow, but by some reneged deal that the state legislature did to our state local entities and handed it over to them, of course, then they pulled it right back out, because I remember, John, our last meeting that you were here in discussions, we discussed the edibles, you brought it up, the edibles, and I told you I thought that would be changed real soon, it was changed before it even went out to communities to even decide that issue is done, and in regards to a lot of other issues, in regards to the manner, that's all on the Medical Marijuana Dispensary website, and Sandy, I was very pleased that you had taken the time before our last meeting to see how stringent, and you mentioned that in our last meeting, how stringent that was, and so my feelings are that we defer to state law, that's what we're here for, we're in Oregon city, and we defer to state law as it is statute, and we don't run our people out of town, because, you know, if you force one or two or three out of town and they do it a few times, they may have an accident, get killed, we can have that resting on our shoulders, or they may decide to move, it's a lot closer for their prescriptions, rather than making a two-hundred-mile minimum round trip to Clamath Falls, or Bend is probably their next option, that's the only ones that have been open so far is in Bend. So, when we think of that, you know, we're also sending those people out to go buy their supplies elsewhere, not only their medical marijuana, but perhaps while they're there to go into the Walmarts and all the big chain stores that we really need to keep our merchants here appeased with, and if those people were staying here, perhaps they wouldn't take that venture where they were forced to go out of town. We're forcing them in this case to go out of town for their medical prescriptions, and therefore we're becoming moral police, I guess, on one issue that, you know, ultimately is going to be decided and the valid initiatives will come and it's not going to make a difference if it's medical or not, but that's something yet to be seen, and it's not my issue, our issue, we won't find out here in Lake County, our vote won't even be close to what it is on the statewide level, if it were to buy a vote in on recreational pot, so, you know, like John says, it's already legal here in the state of Oregon, if we can't accept Oregon statutes, and we have to go with the lead to Oregon cities or the Association of Oregon counties lobbyist push for time, place, and manner, and really out of that, I don't think the time is going to come into being because, you know, they don't put limits on businesses now other than liquor, and so if it comes under the OLCC under pot, recreational pot, well, maybe that will be defined, and they'll close at the same time the liquor stores do, but we're not going to get that decision on time, and I don't see that in our, I don't see planning and zoning allowing us that. Do we have those, those types of stipulations on time on any businesses? No, we don't. Are we going to impose time on, on all the businesses just because we're going to become moral judges on this one and that one? You know, it's state statutes, it's a state law, we need to follow our own leadership, even though they're kind of scared on giving us what the descriptions of time, place, and manner are, but at the same time, we are having to vote on something that is pushed by lobbyists, and we've been assured by Mr. Sean O'Day in a letter to our town manager, it's going to end up in court. Yeah, let's jump right on board, that's where it's heading, that's where they pushed it, that's where they wanted it, so the Town of Lakeview is going to be right on board, you're one of ours, you're right there with that moratorium, and you're the reason that we pushed for this legal battle. However it's settled, it makes not a difference, it's still going to be the state statutes that are all, and it's not going to be changed until the state legislature meets again, and I have a feeling by that time, by the time the state legislature meets again, when is it, John, October?
The legislature meets again in January, we'll have.
That with the valid initiatives.
So it'll be null and void, we'll have other kinds of discussions at that time. They call a special session.
Well, that's. If, well, for that matter, I don't think they will, John, they haven't decided to be.
I have a question.
I'm not done yet, but y'all go ahead.
No, go ahead, I got more.
Okay, no, I was just going to rebut one of the comments that you made, and the fact that the state of Oregon has passed it and has done that, how often do you hear people in Lake County talk about the fact that we have no voice in the state of Oregon?
Definitely, that's what I was speaking of, I have an idea.
And so I think that the constituents of Lake County don't want us to do anything at this time, and I think that's the reason for the moratorium being unacceptable.
Another, I agree, but you say that they have, they have no choice but to drive someplace else, as I understand it, they can grow your own marijuana, if you have a car, you're, you can grow five plants, I'm not very versed on whatever. Pardon?
Mayor, that'll take, I agree with you on that. But, you know, I don't think that every medical marijuana person, you know, an eighty-year-old woman that might be on medical marijuana, I don't know, I don't know what our hundreds five are comprised of, I haven't even looked into that, I don't really care, they need it, they have a prescription for it, they need to be able to get it, by state statutes they can, and we're the ones coming between them getting it. So, the, the fact of the matter is, are they green thumbs? Is that eighty-year-old lady, maybe she's the best green thumb of all, she might grow the best pot there is, I don't know, but there's some that are not green thumbs, and as we know, when you turn your license over to somebody else, you have to depend on them doing things legally, so that's, you know, that's, that spice, it's all set up by the state, you have to have, and as far as all the things that Ms. Decker raised in her comments in her letter that we were to review, I will say that many of the manner things that she gave the list of, she needs to go onto the medical marijuana dispensary, almost, I couldn't think of any of them that you went through that was not already very concisely formed on the whole program, and so, you know, I would invite, have you been there, Mayor? I'm, no, I won't put you on that spot, but I would invite you, before you make a decision such as what you're making, trying to be a moral judge on what kind of prescriptions someone should be able to take and the availability of such, that you defer to state law.
I don't consider myself a moral judge, okay?
But that's what you're being here.
No, I'm not.
On the issue of what? What kind of, what kind of imposition do you think a medical marijuana dispensary should have imposed on them? That's what I asked you two meetings ago, and that's what we decided to have a public hearing. We had one comment that I heard out of all of the people that came, even today, that's neighborhood. Are they allowed in neighborhoods, John? Not by state law, the state says no. So, one person commented, and I think he was an out-of-towner, his neighborhood's already taken care of, his county commissioners voted, no way, you're not going to get it around here and it's not going to be in your neighborhood, that's fine. He came to our, and if that's the one thing we were looking for, we didn't call a comment on moratoriums, we discussed that we should have it to decide what kind of impositions we as a council allowed to do, time, place, and manner would want to impose on a business. To single out a business, you want to put time restrictions on a business just because they're a particular time, that is becoming a moral judge. That's unethical, because we don't have statutes that I think we'll turn to in Oregon to be able to do that, and we also have no way that we can set the manner anymore, that's pretty much been decided by edibles, as I think me and John discussed a couple of meetings ago, and it is in containers as was discussed, we can't decide those issues, it's beyond us, we have time, place, and manner is all we can decide, and there is no description of manner.
Let me, let me interject there, because I'm not so sure I agree with so your blanket statements. I think there's going to be a lot more development in the coming months.
In legal lawsuits, yes.
No, 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 let me finish, I didn't interrupt you. That local jurisdictions will be dealing with these issues, and I think we're going to see a lot more developed here regarding time, manner, and place restrictions. Local jurisdictions are going to work on this, and we're going to benefit from taking the time out with some thoughtful thinking. This isn't, hasn't been all decided, the legislature specifically empowered local jurisdictions to make reasonable time, manner, and place restrictions on the operation of the dispensers. We need to take advantage of the time, okay? That's very important. So whatever we do is thoughtfully done, legally done, and rationally done.
Or follow the guidelines set up by the state statutes, defer to state law, and those guidelines are very plain, they fit within our restrictions, within our own planning and zoning regulations, and if we follow those laws, then we're covered. We don't get into the lawsuits that lawyers are heading us into, the League of Oregon City, and, you know, by an outright ban, Michael, you know, an outright ban's already got Sandy into a litigation lawsuit, they did an outright ban, and they're in litigation on it, so, you know, is that where we want to head? Because we're stepping into it, if we're stepping into the issue of not deferring to state law, I don't get it.
I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't disagree with you more. I do this for a living, my job to keep this out of lawsuits. Imposing the moratorium has been authorized by the legislature, we're not going to impose any restrictions on these businesses that we can't. that we can't legally impose, right?
And once again, I will ask my fellow counselors, what type of imposition did you hear from our public hearing that we had for that reason, time, place, and manner, other than one gentleman commenting on neighborhood? And that's what we talked about. That's why we decided to go ahead and have a public hearing. We needed to hear those three issues that we could decide on, time, place, and manner. And we heard it. One gentleman from out of town told us he didn't want to do his neighborhood. No one else said anything about time, place, and manner. It was all about whether pot was all right or not.
I believe some of the comments were that they didn't want dispensaries in our town. I remember several comments that said that.
In our town?
Yeah.
That's not their decision. They're going to be in our town, just as John says, they're legal. It's going to be here. We can't, all we can do is, is keep the people that have medical marijuana prescriptions, 105 in Lake County at home. Or send them out.
You and I will never agree on this part in this discussion, I think, but.
And I guess I said.
I appreciate your question, your opinion. That's fine. I don't.
And I will, I will take this back to, and it reminds me a little bit of a letter I received from the town of Lakeview when I first came here, from a Mr. John Bogardis, a letter that pretty much told me to leave frigging town. That letter was directed at me, and I told Mr. Bogardis, no thanks, sir, I think I'll stay for a while. Been here now for 11 years. But it was on a planning and zoning regulation that he tried to use on me that didn't work.
I don't have any, I don't have any recollection.
I have a letter, John. I can tell that. I'd be interested. You know, and I, that's what disturbs me, that our community would try once again, or many times, as I've talked to other people, to set up something that would keep a business from wanting to locate here. What a business that is fine with state law is strictly legal. But yet with that type, I mean, Lakeview's hurting. And if we're going to close our minds to new businesses that are operating under state statutes or other statutes, federal or whatever, then, you know, if that's what we're choosing is how to single out businesses, that's where I think we're going to get into the lawsuit ultimately, and that's what it's all going to be about, is all of those people in those communities that have set up these moratoriums and are trying to set up regulations, it's going to be on that. That's right, John. It'll be decided on. You set up a regulation that was singling out a particular kind of business over another kind of business when you really have no right to be doing so. You're just trying to be moral police.
Well, I believe that John said, the legislature said we do have the right to do that.
You do have the right, yeah. That's a flaw of the state legislature, and I think there's a lot of them that will admit they did that.
Any other discussion from the council?
Well, I think we need to look at this ordinance and.
Yeah.
Okay, let me finish.
No, no, on the ordinance, I noticed that on there it said that we would, would just by title only, and would not go through its, but there's some things I have concerns with in the ordinance as well, so.
Okay.
I'm afraid to dissect it.
No, I'm not going to dissect it. All I'm going to say is that we do need to have, if we are going to do anything with time, place, and manner, we need to have the time to do that. And I don't, and I don't want to wait until like next April 30th to do it. But I think we need to, as a council, you know, we have a right to put something on the agenda if we want it on the agenda. So I think that we need to start working on that immediately. Maybe a few towns or cities that have passed an ordinance, see what they've done and how they've done it, and decide if that's how we want to go. I do, you know, we can argue all day about all this other stuff. Because this, just Section 2 does say, "The moratorium imposed by this ordinance shall be effective until May 1, 2015, unless sooner rescinded." So it's not like we, you know, we can't rescind this ordinance as we can in the other one. So that's all I'm saying is.
With that in mind, the time, when would you think would be? I mean, you're saying a shorter time would be better? When are you thinking we could decide? We've already had a public hearing on time, place, and manner. When do you think we could decide that?
I think that we need to make a decision as a council, but we want to put in the ordinance to decide what those things should be. And that's what's going to not just be done by a week and a half from now.
Okay.
So that's, that's all I'm saying.
The issue, you voted to take the thing, or untable the issue, and now you're starting to jump ahead to the ordinance, which is fine. But the issue, the simple limited issue before the council tonight is, since you've agreed to untable the thing, is the passage of the ordinance, okay?
We do that in new business.
Exactly. And we're kind of heading in that direction. So I think we need to, we need to focus on the ordinance itself, right? In new business, and then assuming the ordinance is enacted. And then you need, I would think, to start the process with a work session on how we're going to consider what the process is going to be to review and implement a regulatory ordinance, okay? And a timing for doing that. But that's not the discussion right now. The discussion right now is the efficacy of this ordinance.
And discussing what now we're discussing.
And what we tabled, we haven't gotten. And I mean, we were all in agreeance, the council in general, three to two vote. We tabled it by your vote. And what we tabled was that we were waiting for a state agency to give us.
No, we were tabled to, and they didn't receive no information. Didn't say.
No, no, sir, no, no, sir. I stayed, I was mining. I would ask right now for us to play the recording tonight. It was tabled.
Really? This, we've already argued this. You've already voted to untable it. It was unanimous vote. That's done. So when you get to new business, we're now talking about the moratorium ordinance.
So in the old business now, we've had our discussion about this. I can go ahead and close old business, move to new business. Is that correct?
And so I just would like to make note that we did not receive what we looked for when we tabled the motion to move forward on it, because we were waiting for a state agency to provide us with time, place, and manner descriptions. That is specifically what we were waiting for.
John made the point, it was a vote four zero to bring the motion back.
And I totally agree, but we just returned about from our last meeting in regards to wanting that from a state agency in turn to LOC directing us now.
That said, I'm going to close old business and move into new business. First thing we have is resolution.
Do you want to change the order of your discussion? Just, you know, continue your discussion with regards to this.
Sure. There's no problem doing that? Okay.
There are listed, there's things to do. It doesn't matter.
Go into new business and move this out.
Well, we're in new business, and we'll go to item D under new business. I don't know what that number would be, though. The ordinance number 848. So we will go into, under new business, item D, ordinance number 848, approving up to one-year moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries.
Well, let me just brief the comments, let's say drafted at our take. Eighty percent of the ordinance as drafted.
Eight four eight, right. I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
As drafted, was formatted previously in an ordinance that was submitted to you and recommended to be a standard moratorium ordinance if enacted by any jurisdiction. It's as bare bones and as simple, and attempted to keep it non-controversial. There's a couple of words that I added, and I did so thinking of Mike Warren when I was drafting it. There's, the word temporarily has been asserted, I think, in two cases last, where I was on page one, "Whereas the town council believes it is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the town to enact such a moratorium temporarily prohibiting the operation of marijuana dispensaries." Clearly emphasizing that once time, manner, and place restrictions are enacted, and we enact it, local ordinance, so defining those restrictions, that this ordinance can be rescinded, okay? And I don't foresee this ordinance carrying on until May 1st of next year. I think we can get to business and take care of it. The only thing that might draw it out a little bit, I think there's probably going to be two initiatives pertaining to marijuana on the November ballot, okay? The mayor may not shed light on the situation.
But they have nothing to do with medical marijuana.
I don't, you know, there are nine or 10 that are out there floating.
But the three that they are expecting to reach the ballot are nothing to do with medical marijuana.
Okay, then that's going to make our job easier, right? You don't work out a, you don't work out a.
It's about recreational marijuana.
So I foresee, assuming there's nothing that impacts this, that's going to make the November ballot, this is something that we should be able to do in six months. I'm not, the implementation of this ordinance is not to put off the inevitable for a year. What's to do, the rest of the ordinance is to buy some time so we can look at this intelligently, make our decisions, and move on.
You said there was two then. One was on that temporarily prohibitive. What was the other? I'm sorry.
I guess from manager, I envision two things. If you adopt this ordinance, then there's another ordinance in our future. And that's the, that would be the ordinance that would be the regulatory ordinance that will, you know, undoubtedly comply with the bare bones requirements of state law that they established the time, manner, or time and place, and really didn't much address manner. But the ordinance that you will adopt sometime between now and May 1st, a year from now, would be your rendition of that time, place, and manner. The regulations that the staff here in town all will use if and when somebody comes in the door and proposes to establish one. So, and again, I think that's what I thought to begin with, is that you have until May 1st. You don't have to wait until May 1st. And there are undoubtedly be those places out there that'll wait until May 1st next year and not do anything, and that just falls back to whatever the state law is. But I think what we're talking about doing here is doing, at least looking at the opportunity to do more than just accept state law.
That's exactly right.
But to be more thoughtful about, are there other things? You know, John pointed out, do you want, we've got, we've got two or three commercial zones, for example, in town. We've got highway commercial, central commercial, commercial core. I think there's three. You know, are they all appropriate? For example, is over on East Street next to, there's vacant store next to the jewelry store. Can't.
West Two Airlines?
Yeah, is that, I'm asking a question, I'm not saying it is or isn't. You know, is that, is that a good location for a medical marijuana dispensary? Or with the, you know, I've been told that the Napa store, for example, is going to become vacant. That Napa Auto Parts is going to move to another location. That's a highway commercial versus a downtown commercial. Is that a better location? We have, we have more than one commercial zone, so maybe we need to further define which commercial zone we're talking about.
Okay, then to answer your question, like the first section, section one, the town of Lakeview hereby temporarily prohibits. Clearly emphasizing that what we're doing here is nothing more than a temporary moratorium to help us catch our breath and educate ourselves to what's going to be permissible and non-permissible.
Okay. Any other comment from the council? Mike, you sit down.
Well, I guess when we go through, it asks you for reading by five only, and I did want to discuss some of the things in the ordinance, so.
We're discussing the things in the ordinance now.
Okay. In regards to emergency, I, you know, John, I know that you know wording in the correct fashion, but when I read this Friday and over the weekend, it really got to me because in the, being a licensed broadcast facility by the Federal Communications Commission, an emergency means an emergency. Okay. You let the public know immediately when there's an emergency that exists. But the wording in this regards, section six, emergency, "The ordinance and its purpose is being necessary for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety of the citizens of the town of Lakeview, and emergency is hereby declared to exist." Well.
Okay, let me explain to you.
Do I need to go run, put that on the air right now and look out?
No, 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 no.
Take cover.
You're mixing apples and oranges. Ordinances, we have two types of ordinance. Just hear me, you're going to disagree with what I say, but I've given you a legal opinion. Please accept it, okay? Because you know the broadcasting arena, I don't. I know the legal arena. So I would tend to bow to you if you were talking about on-air broadcasting issues, because I know that's your problem. So give me the benefit of the doubt. There's two types of ordinances, emergency ordinances and non-emergency ordinances. The distinction is that emergency ordinances take effect immediately upon adoption by the council. Non-emergency ordinance is subject to referendum. They take effect 30 days after adoption by the council. Example, any emergency ordinance, if by definition is an ordinance that affects, quote of the magic warning, the public safety and health, welfare of the citizens of the town of Lakeview. All right? This ordinance, whether we were dealing with a May 1 deadline or not, would be an emergency ordinance because the location of medical marijuana dispensaries within the town of Lakeview affects the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the town. So by definition, it would be. Has nothing to do with the May 1 deadline. But on the other hand, if we made this a non-emergency ordinance, which it is not, then it wouldn't be effective until May 22nd, and it would be too late to make the moratorium deadline. So it isn't make, it isn't an emergency ordinance just to beat the deadline. It would be, if we were considering this in January as well. So this, we're not playing games with shit here. We're complying with the ordinance law, okay? And having drafted well over 150 ordinances in Lake, 20-plus-year career representing the town, I know the distinction between an emergency ordinance and non-emergency. So we're on solid footing here. We're not playing games.
No, I agree with you, John. I know it's time constraints is what it is, and we're up against the wall. In order to do it, it's got to be done on an emergency basis.
But if we were considering this in January, it would also.
January, next January?
No, this past January. Say we had 90 days, you're missing my point. It still would be an emergency ordinance.
Because it affects the immediate health, welfare, and safety of.
Safety.
Okay.
And then how does it do that?
Mike, with a reasonable personable reason, you're being unreasonable now, all right?
Okay. I don't think so, but I'll be quiet.
Well, we also have the option of reading it in open council meeting in two consecutive meetings. Correct? To pass an ordinance, which is not emergency.
You can read, you can.
This is a new ordinance. This is not the same. So we haven't read it yet, but one time. We're going through it now.
I know.
You know what you're saying, said to you.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
We can have another meeting.
Yeah, we would, like, have to have a special meeting to read it and other. But we do.
If you read our charter, we have a number of ways that we can adopt ordinances. One of the ways is by unanimous vote, agree to read it by title only, and pass it in one meeting. The other way to do it is to read the entirety of the ordinance in two separate meetings, and then pass it.
That's correct. That's what it said.
Any other discussion from the council? Michael, chairman. Any other? If not, I'd accept the motion to read this by title only.
I would make a motion that we read ordinance, that we accept ordinance number 858 as read by title.
Eight four.
Eight four eight.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to read ordinance number 848 by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Okay, then which, it has to be unanimous. Then what you need to do at this meeting is to read it in its entirety. Schedule a meeting, special meeting, next week. Read it again in its entirety, and then pass it by majority vote.
Okay. All right. So that motion fails, so I'll accept the motion to read the ordinance by, in its entirety. Eight, 848 in its entirety.
Do we need a motion to do that? I move that ordinance number 848 be read in its entirety.
Is there a second? I'll second. Okay, I have a motion, a second, to read ordinance number eight forty-eight in its entirety. I should leave some.
You need to vote it.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does it happen unanimously?
Yeah, I was the one who said it. I vote. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. She did go aye. All right. An ordinance, ordinance number eight forty-eight, an ordinance establishing a moratorium on the location of medical marijuana facilities within the town of Lakeview pursuant to the provisions of section three of Senate Bill 1531, parentheses, 2014, and declaring an emergency. Whereas the Oregon legislature enacted House Bill 3460, parentheses, 2013, which requires the Oregon Health Authority to develop and implement a process to register medical marijuana facilities, whereas House Bill 3460, parentheses, 2013, directed that persons who operate or who are employed by registered medical marijuana facilities would enjoy immunity from state prosecution. Whereas the issues of whether a local government believes a certain type of business should operate within its jurisdictional lim, jurisdictional limits is a local government decision, enforcement of which is subject to general and police powers of that jurisdiction. Whereas the Oregon legislature enacted Senate Bill 1531, parentheses, 2014, which removes immunity from state prosecution for a person who is responsible for or employed by a registered medical marijuana facility located in an area subject to jurisdiction of a city or county that enacts a moratorium prohibiting the operation of a medical marijuana facility. And whereas the town council believes it is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the town of Lakeview to enact such a moratorium temporarily prohibiting the operation of medical marijuana facilities within the jurisdictional boundaries of the town of Lakeview, now therefore, the council of the town of Lakeview ordains as follows. Section one, moratorium declared, the town of Lakeview hereby temporarily prohibits the operation of any medical marijuana facility within the town limits of the town of Lakeview as used in this section. Medical marijuana facility includes any facility that dispenses marijuana pursuant to ORS 475.314 or any other provision of Oregon law. Section two defines duration of moratorium. The moratorium imposed by this ordinance shall be effective until May 1st, 2015, unless sooner rescinded. Section three, enforcement. The chief of police of the town of Lakeview is charged with the enforcement of the moratorium imposed by this ordinance. Section four, remedies not exclusive. The remedies available under Senate Bill 1531, parentheses, 2014, for violation of the moratorium imposed by this ordinance are not exclusive of any other remedies available under any applicable federal, state, or local law. It is within the discretion of the town of Lakeview to seek.
Humor.
Humor. Treat remedies for the violation of the moratorium imposed by this ordinance. Section five, servability. If any provision of this ordinance or its application to any person or circumstance is held invalid, such invalidity, invalidity shall not affect other provisions or applications of this ordinance that can be given effect without the individual provisions or application of.
Invalid.
Or, excuse me, invalid provisions or applications, and to this end, the provisions of this ordinance are servable. Section six, emergency. This ordinance and its purpose for being necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety of the citizens of the town of Lakeview, an emergency is hereby declared to exist. And this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon adoption by the town council.
Stop it. Okay. Start your reading. Rest with it.
Well, neither with that, emergency clause.
Do I read?
Yes. Still within the 30 days.
Okay. So that's the first reading. We need to schedule a special meeting for the second reading of this ordinance in its entirety.
Okay. Before you move away from that, you just go ahead and schedule that. You do have a, a budget committee meeting next Tuesday, the 29th.
I would suggest we start our town council meeting at 3:30.
That's what I was going to ask.
I will be out of town and not able to make that meeting.
You'd be out of town.
Out of town and not able to make that.
Okay, I believe Sharon Walker will be back in town.
The other three have constituted quorums.
Right, they're still a quorum. Okay, thank you for that. I need a motion. Do we need a, a motion to, for a special meeting?
I, I think in this instance, a motion would be appropriate.
Okay.
I would move that the town council set a special meeting for, what is?
The reading of ordinance.
The reading, yeah, reading of ordinance eight forty-eight on.
April 29th.
Thank you. April 29th at 3:30 PM at town hall.
Okay, I'll second. Okay, I have a motion to.
Readable.
We're going to this time. I won't forget. I have a motion in a second to have a special meeting of the town council on April the 29th at 3:30 PM for the reading of, for the second reading of ordinance number eight forty-eight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries unanimous. All right, now we'll go back to item number eight, which is resolution number eight sixty, excessive force policy.
Okay.
What number is eight?
It's eight sixty.
Eight six oh.
Resolutions, I assume they're eight six oh, eight six one would be the next one, eight six two would be the third, have to do with the community development block grant project that we agreed to undertake for the Head Start facility that's proposed to be built down in the south part of Lakeview. These are some of the preliminary things that we need to do. This isn't all of them, but these are the things that we currently need to get completed so that we can then take the next steps in, in the process of getting this underway. So one of the, one of them is you have to have under federal law an excessive force policy, which is really quite simple, to the point that in the second item is, is to address an administration plan, which SCOED is going to be the administration, the admin, assist us with the administration of the project. And then the third resolution is actually to adopt the grant contract itself. That's what things are all about.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the first resolution number eight sixty, the matter of approving an excessive force policy? Pretty, pretty bare bones here, and I guess that covers all we need.
That's exactly the way they have it printed that we're supposed to.
So it's only engaged in non-violence of light demonstration. Okay. I would move that we vote on resolution number eight sixty in the matter of approving an excessive force policy.
Have a motion, a second, to approve resolution number eight sixty in the matter of approving an excessive force policy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Our next item of business is a resolution number eight sixty-one in the matter of approving a grant administration plan for the Head Start Community Development Block Grant, CDVG. Any discussion from the council or Mr. Sim?
I mean, further, it's, it's just an outline of the items that need to be dealt with in the administration of this project and who's responsible for doing that. It will be followed up once the plan is approved and the, and the state has also approved the plan, and this will be followed up at a future council meeting with a, an intergovernmental agreement between the town and SCOED for the administration of the grant. There'll be an actual contract that'll do that.
We just need to make a little repair there where it says whereas the town of Lake is required, there should be a D that required.
The what?
On the first line.
I dropped another letter, just like the where and meaning, what you may have noticed.
Yes, I did notice that.
But I found, Mike pointed that one out. I fixed that one for, for the other folks. Spell check, didn't catch those things.
No, it is spelled right.
We'll fix it.
I'll accept the motion.
I would move that we vote on resolution number eight sixty-one in the matter of approving a grant administration plan for the Head Start Community Development Block, CDVG.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second, to approve resolution number eight sixty-one in the manner of approving a grant administration plan for the Head Start Community Development Block Grant, CDVG. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries unanimous. Our next item is.
The next item is a resolution to actually approve the grant contract with the state of Oregon.
We all read that.
John has though.
It's awkward, people.
It's a.
But we have done this before with.
The town had a CDVG before I came.
It was on the.
Housing rehabilitation.
The little dorm room housing.
Yes. SCOED also, just, you know, for a little level of comfort, SCOED, this would be at least their third CDVG project that they've worked on as well. So you guys, this, this is, this is big stuff. It's pretty, it's complicated. The state is, is being very helpful in making sure that we do step A before we do step B, because if you do step B too soon, you can be, you know, there can be major consequences. So with everybody's help, this project's going to take probably three fiscal years to get through, as, as much as it seems like you should be able to build a building and be done with it in a, in a summer's worth of construction season. Construction on this project is not likely to start until late this fall and possibly next spring. And then by the time we've done the construction and then done all the closeout things that need to be done, and John and I talked briefly about that this morning, with the documentation that has to happen at the end of transferring the ownership and maintaining control and the things that have to happen, this, this is probably going to take most of three years to finish it from one end to the other. So it's not something that's going to be quick. Because of that, I don't intend to rush and make mistakes, so.
I, I was going to ask John on this. I, I read, any flags or anything stand out? I, I know this is, is quite a deal, and on top of that, I don't know how you do this for a living, eating these all the time. I read it, and it's pretty much Greek to me, but I would be truthful, but anything stand out, John, that we should?
Well, if, if we had even footing to negotiate these things, there would be a laundry list of things I want to change. We don't have, we're not on even footing. It's if you want the grant, here's the contract. We've tried to change various provisions before, and it's very, very difficult to do, to the extent that if you're dealing with a state agency and they're controlling the money, you're not going to change.
So we've just got to stay alert the whole time?
Very much so. Very much so, Mike.
And, and they are also, you know, just in their defense slightly, I guess, is they're getting the money from the federal government, so they're dealing with, like us dealing with the state is they have to deal with the Fed, so.
That's it. Any discussion from the council? I'd entertain a motion.
I would that we vote on resolution number eight sixty-two in the matter of approving a state of Oregon community development block grant program, grant contract, excuse me, Lakeview Head Start.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to approve resolution number eight sixty-two in the manner of approving a state of Oregon community development block grant program, grant contract with Lakeview Head Start. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Post carries unanimous. That concludes all the business for the council tonight. Any other comments? If not, I'll adjourn the regular meeting at 5:25. Thank you all.
John, I have a spot on the original contract for your, just the dollar that you previewed.
I reviewed it, doesn't say approved.
It doesn't say you proved, it says you previewed.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.